I'd like to call to order the King George County School Board Regular Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by the King George Elementary School Today Show crowd, followed by a moment of silence. Please be seated, although those of you at the front of the room, we would love to hear about the Today Show.
Good evening, Board. This is the King George Elementary School Today Show. We have about 25 students who participate each morning in reading our morning announcements on a live Google Meet that we share with all of our students and staff in the building. And we go live every morning. We start off with some music usually. And this week, we've even added a trivia question for students to answer before the end of the week. And I would like to give them all an opportunity to introduce themselves.
Awesome.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm A.B. Walker.
Hello, I am Sarah Zuck.
Hello, I'm Leila Birdman.
Hello, I'm Aleah Byrne.
Hello, I'm Danica Simpson.
Hello, I'm Aurora Hudak.
Hello, I'm Bruce Cho.
Hello, I'm Gavin Pfeifer.
Hello, I'm Kennedy Anderson.
Hello, I'm Trig Brown.
Hello, I'm Emerson Rollin.
Hi, I'm Maddie Murphy.
Well, thank you all for joining us. What's the trivia question for the week?
How much of the water that is on Earth is freshwater?
Oh, all right. I feel like I knew that maybe 25 years ago. Very good. All right. So any other tidbits to share with us?
I will say that we have a very good crew this year. We use Google Slides for our script that the students read from. It is edited each morning by our two news directors. And we also have some students who are help making our backgrounds in Canva to use on our green screen as we go live. And we're also very thankful to Mr. John Vance for helping getting all of our technology sorted out for the Today Show.
Awesome. So how many of you are going to see on the Today Show in like 20 years? None? Well, awesome. Very exciting. Glad you could be here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
All right, we will move on to public and employee comment. Ms. Rinko, do we have any comment this evening? We do not. Was there anyone here to make public comment who perhaps forgot to sign in? No. All right. How about online, Mr. Vance? Anyone? Negative. Okay. Well, we'll just march right along here. Okay, do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair. If you guys remember, at our last school board meeting, we were discussing Policy AC and the request for legal counsel, which we have scheduled for closed session at the end of this meeting. And then we have a discussion for Policy AC prior to that. I was, with the request to the board, asking permission to potentially move that legal advice up to between action items and discussion items so that we can go into the discussion items potentially with a more fruitful conversation.
Certainly. All right, thank you, Dr. Boyd. Do we have a motion to entertain that? The change to moving closed session up after our action items?
Yes, I will make that motion that we move the action, or excuse me, the discussion item about the nondiscrimination policy to take place after our closed session.
So I think, just to be clear, I think the proposal is to move the closed session up in front of all the discussion items, correct?
All right. Yeah, that's fine. Okay. And I moved the closed session to occur before all the discussion items.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right. Any other changes?
Yes, Madam Chair. I would like to add a discussion item. And let's just call it Discussion About Policy Updates. I'm specifically looking at how we are given those updates in relationship to sometimes they're crossed out, sometimes in not really knowing what the update is. But we'll wait for the discussion. But Discussion About Policy Updates, that's all.
Okay. Is there, I guess, additional information that would make that conversation more beneficial, like at a follow-on meeting, or you just want to...
That's why it's a discussion this meeting. Yeah, there might be some. You know, I don't necessarily want to get into it now, but...
What are you calling it?
Well, a Discussion About Policy of the process in which we receive policy updates prior to the meeting, to which ones, sometimes we have the actual update from our current policy and then the change. Sometimes it just shows the update, and so I have to go and look it up. And I would like to have our current policy and what was changed. That's the discussion. Am I making sense?
I feel like we already have that, but I'm not sure.
With some of them, we do.
Are you saying you want to discuss the, I'm sorry, that you want to discuss the process of policy updates?
I want to be able to tell what the update is, period. And right now, when I see the update, I have to go look up the original policy.
Okay.
It would be nice to have the, sometimes it shows it's crossed out to tell the changes. Sometimes it gives a separate, saying this whole paragraph was different. And sometimes all it is is simply the new update, and I have to go and look at our policy. It would be nice to have both of those side by side. That's one thing. There's a second thing about the policy updates that I'd like to look at. And I'd like to know the ones that are directly related to Virginia law and those that are simply VSBA recommendations. Now, I know that all the VSBA recommendations relate to law, but there are some things that may be a VSBA recommendations that don't necessarily relate to Virginia law, that it's just simply the recommendations.
Okay. So where would you like, would you like to, can we just add that to the end of our discussion items this evening? Would that work?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Okay. All right. So we will begin this evening with a presentation on our COVID protocols. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, we've had a few questions in our community and within the school division about where we stand with COVID and how we're moving forward coming out of COVID. So Ms. Fisher, our local resident expert on COVID, is going to provide us a quick presentation on where things currently sit.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Yes, so I believe the school board actually, and Dr. Boyd, had some questions from the community and just wanted an update on where we are with COVID protocols. So what you see in front of you on the screen is also the handout that you're receiving. And this just lays out similar to what we shared back in the spring, where we currently are with our protocols. We have not had many changes since the spring, but I'll briefly go through what we are doing in King George. If a student or staff, and these all apply for students and staff members. If you test positive, your isolation is for five days, either from the date of the positive test or your symptoms. If you have symptoms, there are a couple of different options based on standard illness protocols. If you go to the doctor and are diagnosed with something other than COVID, then whatever that timeline for return is, is standard, whether it's strep throat or flu, et cetera. Or you can, if you're unable or don't go to the doctor, you can do testing. And two negative tests over 24 hours will return you to school as well. And there is no additional quarantine or isolation required following in exposure. Anything that has testing mentioned, we do have test kits available for use at home, free of charge to any student or staff member that so desires.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fisher. Do any of my colleagues have any questions? So I'll start, of what folks are thinking. I still have a question. So the, okay, so the five-day isolation following symptoms or a positive test today, is there a differentiation between, it looks like it says under the positive box that day zero is a positive test or symptom onset? So even if, so if you don't take a test for a few days after you become symptomatic, your clock starts when your symptoms started?
Correct. So if I started feeling, having symptoms today, but I don't, what's today? Monday, but I don't take a test until Wednesday, as long as when I report my positive test on Wednesday, I include the information that I was symptomatic on Monday. Day zero is Monday.
Okay, okay.
And again, this is all self-reported by families and staff, so we rely on the information that they provide us.
Understood, understood. And is there any differentiation between a student who is sent home symptomatic versus one who, say, calls out sick on a particular day?
Not necessarily. The timelines are the same, assuming we are, the symptoms are reported when the student is absent. So if a student is simply absent and doesn't report to school, there is no follow-up. The next day they return, and if the symptoms weren't reported, we don't backtrack, you know, for absences. But if they report that they are home because they are sick, then they're provided the same information that they would have been if they were sick in school.
At school. Okay. Regardless of the symptoms that they report, like if they just call out sick, are they sent COVID guidelines, or if they report that they're sick with COVID-like symptoms?
It would be if those, if the symptoms that they report are part of the COVID, on the COVID list. And the third page of the document you have lists those that we are alerted to. So there are certainly symptoms that you might have, an earache, for example, that would be a symptom of illness, but not COVID-related.
Okay, understood. Any other questions for Ms. Fisher?
Do students return to school the sixth day after a COVID test, if it's negative?
Say that one more time.
So students can return the sixth day of school if they have tested negative for COVID. Is that how that works?
If a student is only symptomatic and they take a COVID test and they're negative, is that your question?
Yes.
They can return under whatever the illness is. If they have a fever, it would be 24 hours after their fever ends, et cetera, whatever the symptoms call for.
Thank you. Any further questions? No. Ms. Hawke or Mr. Bush, anything? Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Certainly appreciate the update. I just know it's, you know, we've been rolling along pretty well this year, so the update's appreciated. Thank you. Dr. Boyd, anything else?
No, ma'am.
All right. We will move on to our consent agenda this evening. So this evening, we have minutes from four of our meetings. I understand that we'd like to pull the minutes for the first two, the August 8th, 2022 regular meeting minutes, and the August 22nd, 2022 special meeting minutes off for edit and have them returned at our next meeting. Is that accurate? Okay. So that leaves the minutes from the August 22nd, 2022 regular meeting minutes, and the August 22nd, 2022 special meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the minutes from August 22nd at 6:00 PM, regular meeting, and also the August 22nd special meeting minutes from 7:30 PM, as presented.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right, moving on to our action items this evening. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, if we remember last time, we had our policy manual updates. So if we are so ready as a board to approve the policy manual updates that are listed below.
All right. Do we, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the policy manual updates listed on our agenda?
I have a question about one of them.
Certainly.
It's JHCD-R.
Okay.
And just a question, want to be sure I understand this. Okay, where is it? It's under JHCD-R, under General Information, the last paragraph, Students Found in Possession of Any Medication, Whether Prescribed or Not, May Be in Violation of the Code of Conduct of These Regulations or Not Followed. I just want a couple of questions about that. One is, I'm assuming they're even talking about aspirin, right, ibuprofen, Tums, Pepto Bismol, I guess, is that true, Dr. Boyd?
They are all subject to that policy. Now, it's not a no-zero tolerance policy. It's certainly one that we can look into and flesh out a little bit as far as what that substance is. It has, there's a large range of substances there that we have to measure for. But yes, it is any prescription or any medication that they have that they're not allowed to have in school.
It is a regulation.
Oh, no, I realize that. I'm just, just wanted to make sure. I don't know as to how far down, like I said, Tums, which is so, you know, cough drops, that it would include cough drops in the whole works, right?
And typically, if it's a medication of that nature, oftentimes what we'll do is take that, if it's a Tums or a cough drop or something like that, I'll tell you from experience, a nurse will take that and return it to a parent.
Okay. All right, that's all. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to accept policy updates, EEA, EAD, IF, IGBA, JFB, JHCB, JHCD-R, JHCD-F, and JHCE. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right. And at this time, in accordance with our updated agenda, so do we have a motion to go into closed session? And we do have an updated revised motion.
Pursuant to State Code Section 2.2-3711.8.1, for the purpose of discussion, consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, substitute, stipends, and resignations of employees of the school board, and pursuant to State Code Section 2.2-3711.8.8, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, I move that we enter closed session.
Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We're now in closed session.
I move that the King George County School Board returned to open session and certified that pursuant to State Code 2.2-3712.D, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body.
We have a second?
Second motion.
Do you certify?
Certify.
Certify.
I certify as well.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we are now in open session. Do we have an action to approve personnel as presented?
I move that we approve personnel as presented.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right, so we are back to our discussion items on the agenda this evening. So first we have our V S B A yearly breakdown. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. It was asked for the purposes of discussion to take a look at our Virginia School Board Association yearly breakdown for finances, and if you turn to, I believe, the middle of the packet, we have the invoice from the V S B A in the total of $7,835 of annual dues. And then following that is a memorandum from the Virginia School Board Association showing what we received for those expenses. So I can stop there for any discussion.
Hold on just a minute, I can let me get to it.
I have a question, Dr. Boyd. So on the, I guess the invoice, it has total expenditures for operations for your school division in the amount of forty-nine-ish thousand, then division dues are only seven thousand, what's the difference?
Yeah, so I asked that question as well to Sheri. That is actually a pool of funds for all schools in the region. That is actually a pool of funds for all schools in the region, that forty-nine thousand. Our share of that is $7,335.92 with a $500 legal assistance fee for that total that I mentioned before, $7,835.92. I should have also mentioned too, that if you turn to the third page in that section, we have an invoice too for board docs, which we use as a school board tool to create a library of our policies and such, that's an additional $2,700.
So that's on top of the seven thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
Further questions?
Okay, fine, sorry, oh, go ahead.
Just wondering, so I understand that the policy service we give, we pay for that separately, I think it's $10,000 a year. So as far as this amount, that's simply for membership, do we know what services are offered simply for membership?
So I think on the following page, if you take a look at those bulleted sections, I think that would answer your question. So it says the V S B is working diligently to improve and refine our offerings and services. As a member of the association, you receive the following benefits.
So policy services are included in the seven thousand?
Yes, I believe so.
I'm just, I'm wondering, what is the difference it talks about in that last bullet item of which we're just talking about, a legal assistance fund to support access to V S B A staff attorney and so on, filing briefs? And then what is then the legal assistance fee? Why wouldn't that be part of the overall dues? What is separate, in other words, do you know? It's okay if you don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, off the top of my head.
All right. I guess I'm a little, I'd like us to look into and have more discussions, doesn't have to be this time, about legal representation for the school board, of it being possibly not just V S B A, but being outside of that, and we've done that in the past. And I'd like to see us actually have maybe a legal representative that's not from V S B A, it's not from any one of the, any political groups or anything, and just he is a legal representative of our, of the board. And I'd like us to entertain further discussions about that, maybe even getting some proximate costs from some that maybe Dr. Boyd might know, or me, or maybe other people, to represent us, besides the V S B A.
So at this time, we do have, so this was a bit of a topic last year, which is how we settled on Stacey Heaney's services, on an kind of ad hoc-ish basis?
Yeah, I'd like to, and that was fine, and obviously, we use her services from time to time, and that's fine. I guess I'd like to have further discussion about how much does she serve us, and exactly what does that entail? And maybe, Dr. Boyd, if, next time, if you could kind of give a breakdown of, I know we use her ad hoc, is what is it that she would provide for us? And maybe even look at some other possible legal representation besides her? Not that she's wrong, I would just like to entertain looking at that a little bit further.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? No? All right, we will move on to our next item for the evening, employee COVID leave. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, Madam Chair, if you turn the page, to the next page of your documents, we have had some questions from employees about what our process is for COVID leave at this point, given where we are in the COVID process. We did have a review tonight from Ms. Fisher. I'll go a little further in deep, in depth, on where we are with employee COVID leave. So the first page you'll see there is the fringe benefit leave schedule. This is a regulation that's in our policy manual, and it talks about the amount of leave that we receive each year. Each individual employee receives ten days a year if they're on a hundred and eighty to two hundred and twenty day contract, and then twelve days a year if they're on a two hundred and forty-five day contract. Also with that leave, if you are, I think anyone beyond a twelve month employee, receives personal leave three days a year, to include twelve month employees. And then twelve month employees also follow that annual leave schedule below. So that's just an answer to the number of sick days and personal days that we receive a year. If you turn the page, we were fortunate enough to have, is COVID leave in our region, and how other school divisions right now are managing COVID leave policies if they still exist. So you'll see on the left-hand side of that table is the name of the division, and then the next column in that table will show whether or not that division still participates in a COVID leave policy. And you've got a few notes on the far right-hand side that show which divisions, or what some divisions are doing as far as COVID leave, if it still exists. So just kind of in summation, you'll see that most counties in our region right now no longer have a COVID leave policy. The only one that's an exception to that is North Umbolin, which still has a COVID leave policy, and they've got a pretty lengthy note there that I can let you guys read as far as how they handle COVID leave.
Any questions for Dr. Boyd?
I'm curious, what was our COVID leave policy back in the?
Was it ten days? Yeah, ten days, correct? Yeah, we, back in the, in the prime of COVID, it was ten days of COVID leave that was on top of your personal and sick leave.
Okay, and so that was paid for with some of the bonus funds we got from the government, I'm forgetting exactly.
Yeah, absolutely. Ms. Zersky can come up and answer questions.
Good evening. Actually, we have not received any funds. We basically paid for any COVID leave if we had to have substitutes covered during those days when employees were out for COVID leave. If we had to have a substitute, we paid that out of local funds.
Was that not eligible for federal funds that we had?
Have not been given any reimbursement for that leave as of yet.
So we get ESSER, what were they all called that we got for COVID? We had different funding lines that we got to help with COVID from the federal government, right?
Yeah.
We did have several funds, we had ESSER, I think we had ESSER one, ESSER two, and ESSER three, yes.
Just a comment, Madam Chair, some of the staff and teachers are concerned because they use all the COVID days and they have no more personal or sick days. I just wanted to make the comment. Thank you.
Certainly. Dr. Boyd, I have a question. On the first page, the, just the, back to the fringe benefit leave schedule, so I think I understand the sick leave and personal leave, and then the annual leave, how does that break out? So it says a hundred and eighty to two hundred and twenty day contract, zero, two hundred and forty-five day contract, zero, and then the, then like, ten years and days, how does that all relate?
I didn't bring my sheet up here with me. That zero next to two hundred and forty-five days should not be there.
Should be, okay.
And then underneath that, you will see lines, oh, thank you. If you have been with us, if you are a two hundred and forty-five day contracted employee, if you've been with us for zero to six months, you haven't earned any annual leave yet. If you've been with us for seven to thirty-six months, that's twelve days a year. So for the first six months, you get no leave, the next two and a half years, you're going to get twelve days. Thirty-seven to seventy-two, it's fifteen days, and then anything over seventy-three months is eighteen days of annual leave. That's only for twelve month employees.
Okay, yep, okay. So those last four are basically subbullets to the two hundred and forty-five day contract?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I wanted to be sure. Okay, thank you.
So are the ESSER funds, they're not eligible to be used to pay for subs, or?
I do not believe that that's how our ESSER funds were allocated.
So we could have chosen to use them for that, or?
I would have to go back and talk to the people who were in charge of the ESSER funds.
Yeah, so I guess that's a related question, is getting accounting for how all our ESSER funds were spent. I mean, because I like to know if they're able to use for that, and do we have any left?
We have ESSER funds left, yeah. So you would like a review of our ESSER funds?
Right, and is it an option to use what we have left for this purpose? And what else can we use it for?
I'd have to go back and check too, because we went well beyond what the federal government required that we offered as COVID leave. We went well beyond what, what they required as COVID leave. So it may be if we were eligible, we would only have been eligible for it during that time period. And if my memory serves me correctly, we were only eligible, we had to offer it through December thirty-first, twenty twenty, I believe, or if it was twenty twenty-one at the latest. I'd have to go back and double check that. But we offered additional COVID leave through March eleventh of last year, of this year, actually, twenty-two.
All right, any further questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Zersky. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, Madam Chair, so the next item, if?
Yep, certainly, so our next item is policy A C, which is our non-discrimination policy, discrimination, right?
Yeah, so just in, just in your board packet, you'll see a copy of our non-discrimination policy. I know we wanted to discuss that in a little more detail, so I just included our current non-discrimination policy there.
All right, thank you, Dr. Boyd. All right, so this was on our review, on our discussion item last meeting for review, it was put back on discussion item, it would ordinarily be on our action item list, following our typical process. So what discussion would we like to have?
Madam Chair, after a brief discussion, I'll allow that, but I would like to entertain, and I will make a motion after we discuss it, that we put the academic year governor school, certain practices prohibited, required policy, not under our current discrimination policy, but place that in a separate place, because it is very different in how they describe this in reference to our current A C policy.
As a part of that, would you want the reference removed from the policy A C that referenced that part of the code?
Yes. I would recommend that Dr. Boyd and others look at another place, I was looking myself, as to another place to put this, under students or under an agreement, because the governor school is, is not necessarily part of our curriculum, but it is something, an entity that's outside of the school, but I think we could find a place to put it that it wouldn't have to be under the discrimination policy, because it has to do with entrance into the governor's school.
Any further comments?
Well, as I made comments at the last meeting, I do think the A C policy is, I think you could use rewrite, but. I appreciate us giving some discussion for this meeting, but I don't think we want to be doing that. I think just dealing with this along the lines of what you suggested, back to this, potentially I'll later.
So would someone like to make a motion to approve, I guess, approve the, not, our policy ace, our non-discrimination, well, I guess we would need to have this come back with the reference removed in order to prove it, unless someone would like to?
Madam Chair, where are you looking at the reference exactly?
So the reference that was added is what's underlined, so Virginia Code, Code of Virginia twenty-two point one dash twenty-six dot two?
Hold on.
Sure. It's a change, so our current existing policy is this policy without that reference, correct? So if, so I'm not in favor of the change, I'll throw that out there, but if we would like to entertain a motion to reject the policy update, I believe that means that our old policy would stand as it is, correct, Dr. Boyd?
Yes, yes, ma'am, that is correct.
I would reject the policy.
Hold on, hold on, go on, Mr. Hawk.
I would think that simply because we don't know where to put this regulation is not a, a point toward doing anything with our non-discrimination policy. I think we can perhaps continue this discussion and do some more homework as to where the governor's, the governor's school admission policy is. It is, this is a regulation change, it's, and if we need to create another updated regulation, that's perfectly acceptable, but I don't think we need to make a change to anything right now, because there's no timestamp on this update, in my opinion.
Other than that it was updated in order to be in compliance with state code, as all of our policy updates are?
Madam Chair, but I still think if we do find another place to put this, it would meet that, just because we're not putting it in exactly the same place they're suggesting it. In fact, we can even make reference to the other place where we're going to put it. I would like to make a motion that Dr. Boyd and the staff look at the possibility of placing this governor's school acceptance policy in another place. Let them entertain and look at that, not that we have to necessarily have an action item yet, but just simply look at, is there another place to put this in our policy or in our regulations?
Okay, are you, so is that, can you repeat your motion?
I would like to make a motion that Dr. Boyd and his staff look at a place to place this academic year governor's school, certain practices prohibited and required acceptance policy.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I just pointed out, I think that the law is very clearly written, so simply taking the part of the Virginia Code that, that's referenced here, and just put it in a policy, would be very simple to do, and be very straightforward, makes sense.
Yes.
All right, all in favor say aye.
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 All right, chair votes nay, motion carries. So we'll see that back next time, Dr. Boyd?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right, next we have the advisory committee approval for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Yes, Madam Chair, so if you turn to the next page in your packet, you will see the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three advisory committees that we have, and we approve every year. You'll see on the left-hand column, your technology advisory committee with, I didn't count the names there, but it looks like a decent number, maybe fifteen or twenty names. We have our Title I Advisory Committee, we have our Gifted Advisory Committee, and then if you turn the, turn the page, you'll see the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee, and I come to you this evening to ask for your approval of the members, of these committees and the members that stand on them.
All right, thank you, Dr. Boyd. So to be clear, so we would like to approve this this evening, if possible? Or is it timed?
I know it's a discussion item right now, and it's not timely, but if you, if you don't see any issue with not approving, with approving it, I'd be fine with that as well.
Okay, because I know that the committees, some of them do want to plan meeting times on their schedule, so I would be willing to entertain a motion if others were.
I move that we approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three advisory committees as presented.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right, so next we have more policy manual updates, so I will read through them. If you have comments on any, feel free to interject. So first for consideration is policy C M, School Division Annual Report. Policy G B M, Professional Staff Grievances. Policy G C B A, Staff Salary Schedules.
I do have a comment here.
Okay, go ahead.
So this is awfully generic, and I wonder if we should give something to make more specifics, so we know what it means, maybe discussing here, we could just decide, but, so I guess to start off with, establish approved salaries for all school employees. So how is this unique and distinct from just passing a budget? I mean, do we think that just simply passing a budget meets this policy? Or are we saying approving the step scale, for instance, separately, something that we would need be required by this policy? I don't know, just reading the statement.
I don't know. Dr. Boyd, do you have a?
Say that last part again, I want to hear what you said at the end.
Well, I guess the main question is whether, if we're simply saying we do this, we approve the salaries simply by approving the budget, or do we look at this separately, something more specific, such as the step scale?
So we also have an opportunity through the year where we'll come to you and propose a particular salary in. So we also have an opportunity through the year where we'll come to you and propose a particular salary increase, and also how that affects the salary scales across the division. So are you asking if, I believe I'm understanding you correctly with whether or not just approval of the budget would satisfy this policy, or if the need to look at the salary scales would satisfy this policy?
Yeah, I think we need to be, I think reading this policy, you don't know, so we ought to make it so it's clear, but I guess part of the question is what historically has been done? That's helpful.
What historically has been done with the budget process?
I mean, we, as part of budget process, we talked about a certain raise for the staff. So is that the only way we do it, is there anything we're doing distinct from the budget process to satisfy this policy, or is that pretty much it?
The, the establishment of the salary scales and the proposed raise that the school board or the state suggests is part of the budget process. So we'll come to you, I believe, March is timeframe, somewhere around there. In December, January, as far as the salary scales are concerned, and the initial steps in the budget. Do that initial presentation where we talk about what we're proposing and what we've proposed for as far as salary increase.
Okay, so December, we'll talk about salary separate from the budget and then roll it in.
Yeah, there's a whole lot of step, there's, there's, there's a, we can talk all night about, I think, the steps that go into that, the budget builder and things of that nature that Dr. Vincent had covered in the past.
Okay, so it's kind of tangentially related, so I guess we talked about maybe getting a presentation at some point about the step scale and that might inform this, but I think for right now, maybe it's not a big enough deal to necessarily want to deviate from the SBA and have to drafted ourselves to be more specific, is that what you all think, or what do you think about this?
I'm not clear on what you're proposing.
No proposal, I was asking a question, if you think this policy is specific enough? As far as how we do it?
I mean, it says that we establish and approve salaries. We do that?
I don't know what, what.
Yeah, I'm not sure what we're debating.
I don't know what else you would want. Because anything else would come in terms of regulations and process. I mean, what this says, the school board establishes and approves salaries for all school employees.
Right, so I, yeah, I think for now it's fine, but I would like to get, probably just need more information going through the process earlier in December, stuff that I, you know.
That doesn't mean we need to change the policy.
Yeah, so does it sound like you, you would like more information about understanding the process and how the salary scales and all of that, how that's all developed?
So I think there's an offer to do a presentation in November, and I would
Okay.
Be interested in getting that, and so until then, I think this policy is fine.
Okay. All right.
So just so we're all on the same page. In November, our HR department would be happy, November 7th Board Meeting, if that's works for everybody to do a salary presentation?
That'd be great.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Certainly.
I don't think we need to put the process into policies, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Rolls, but you know, we're going to be presented the process every year, and I don't think it needs to necessarily be outlined specifically in policy, as long as it's presented to us every year.
Right, yes, this kind of, this policy doesn't really even add that much at this point, but, all right.
Basically saying we're trusting our superintendent and the staff.
Certainly, all right, so next for consideration, we have Policy GCBE, Family and Medical Leave. Policy GCDA, Effect of Criminal Conviction or Founded Complaint of Child Abuse or Neglect. Policy GCPA, Reduction in Professional Staff Workforce. Policy GCPF, Suspension of Staff Members. Policy JFCB, Sportsmanship Ethics and Integrity. Policy KKA, Service Animals in Public Schools. All right, if there are no further, if there's no further discussion, I assume Dr. Boyd will have these back at our next meeting for action?
Absolutely, Madam Chair.
All right, so now we have our additional discussion item that was added earlier this evening, so we wanted to talk about policy, I guess our policy manual update process, Mr. Bush, you want to lead that discussion since it was your request?
Yeah, it's, it's not a big thing, two things. What we get as it, like today, as a discussion item, we see where things are crossed out, sometimes it's rather minor. And then when it's an action item, all those things are left off, and what happens is, is that then I am, I'm going back and forth. And I guess what I'm saying is, when it comes to an action item, like at the next board meeting, why not simply have the same as we're showing in the discussion item? I know that sounds odd, and I'm, maybe I'm just getting old, I don't know, but rather than me having to go back and forth, and I can see the actual things that were changed when it comes to voting, and not voting, but actually approving those policy changes. In other words, having the same lines crossed out that was in today in the discussion items, having it look the same for the action item.
So, okay, so I guess why? If we review it at one meeting and it gets changed, is it because you don't
Well, I want to see that. Discussion item, it's a discuss, the updates were discussion today. I was able to see the things that were changed, sometimes it's just simple grammatical mistakes or whatever, sometimes it's whole paragraphs. And, and again, I read through some of them, I don't get through all of them, I'll just be honest, I try, but I don't. But by the time we get to the action item, I've gone through them all, and I'm continually looking back and forth. All I'm saying is, it's a very simple thing, it's simply the same way that we see them when it's in the discussion phase like it is today, is it let it look that same way in the action step, that's all.
So I, so I guess my, my take would be though, that we want to, we should be approving what is the final policy. So I guess I have two thoughts, one is that we should be able to do thorough review of them when they are discussion items, so that we're informed when it comes to making them action items.
Right.
And otherwise, I mean, I suppose like a
But that's the reason.
File could be reattached to Board Docs or something with the drafts in addition to the other ones?
Yeah, well, anything, it would help me, and maybe it's just something I should do, is that maybe I should just have my own copy here, sitting here. I'm just saying that I go through several of them, but we just got this a couple of days ago, and I haven't gone through them all. But by the time we do as an action item, I will have gone through them all.
So I think it's our duty as board members to make sure we come prepared to review our discussion items, so I would, but I, I mean, I think the solution, if all you want is a copy of them, would be to download the draft versions.
Okay, then the second question related to that is, if you notice on the action items today for the updates, there were still some things that were crossed out. Found that curious, and I had to go back and see, why did they still cross out some things in the action items? Why isn't it just simply all the updated policies? So I understand what you're saying, but then we still did some back and forth, because if you look at some of the action items under updated policies.
Do you have an example? I didn't, I missed that.
Okay, if you look today. Let me go back up here. Action items, here we go, action items under policy updates. And if you go down through, you will see some things that were, let me go to one, and I'll find it. Unless I'm just out to lunch, here we go, under the JC, JHCD dash R. Those are all crossed out. This is under the action items for today, update, you see it?
That, yeah, so.
Those are crossed out, and you'll go down through here, and you'll see some other lines that are drawn. I'm just saying, why, let's make sure that we're clear, you look at them, again, JHCD dash F, same thing. They crossed out the whole request form for treatment, that's all been eliminated, and those were crossed out. So it's like, okay, we, we, we repeat some of the things that were in the discussion item and show that were crossed out, but we don't repeat others.
So I've always assumed like that, in that case, like I, I hear what you're saying, that these are crossed out. My understanding was because that's the entire policy's been rewritten, right, instead of
Yes.
Right, CDR, instead of just a change.
Just leaving it blank.
Just don't.
Just shown it.
Right.
It's all crossed out, so.
So that, okay, so that's an inconsistency, those could be, we could request.
Kind of a moot point, it's not, my second comment is the big one I wanted to make, so let's just leave that, you're right. I should probably, I'll admit, I should be better prepared reading every single policy, and I am by the time it gets to the action item, I don't want you to think I'm not. And maybe all you guys are much better than I am in the last couple of days, I just haven't been able to do that. Okay, my second comment though about the updates is, I would like to see, some of these are the SBA looks at all of the laws in Virginia, and they write policy related to their interpretation of the laws. And sometimes it's an exact copy of the law, and sometimes it's their interpretation. I would like to see if it's at all possible which ones are directly from Virginia Code, and which ones are from just the VSB's recommendation. This is something, well, make another, this is something that several divisions, I spoke and listened to a few other divisions that do this. This would be very helpful to me. And a lot of things are from Virginia Code, and some of them are not. I would like to see which ones, especially when they make an update, they may have had something that was originally, they took from the Virginia Code, but then the update was from just VSB. So I would like to see which is Virginia Code and which is a recommendation just simply from the VSB.
If it is listed as the Virginia Code location, then you're saying that's the VSB interpretation?
Can, can, can you give an example? So like if we look at the ones for this, this, this meeting, right, so the very, the first page of the policy updates does list each policy code, and then a, you know, a note as to what is changed, so like this, School Division Annual Report, Policy CM. It does say, "Policy updated to reflect amendment of Virginia Code 22.1."
Could you give a page number?
Yeah, the very first page, so if, this is why Board Docs is helpful, so it's the first, I'm not in the, so the first.
Page number of the packet.
I don't have the packet open, I'm using Board Docs, so it's the first page of the policy, I don't know.
So you're talking about in the discussion, policy updates, right?
It's the section, right, yeah, in the section.
Page 23 of the packet.
Okay, yeah, so for policy updates, the first page, so said, the first section, right, the beginning of that section says, "Explanation of Revisions." Policy Code CM, Revision, School Division Annual Report. And then it says, "Policy updated to reflect amendment of Virginia Code 22.1-81 by Senate Bill 421." The next one says, "Legal Reference is Updated," the next one says, "Policy and Legal Reference is Updated." So seems to me, some of that may be the information that you're looking for, can you give an example of one of the changes that perhaps?
Let me, the next meeting, I'll be very clear, and I'll break all these down so I can show you, I'm sorry, I didn't, right now. Yeah, I should have brought a breakdown maybe, so I could have showed you, and I'll show you that next time, exactly what I mean, all right?
Okay, so I'll put that back on the agenda.
Yes.
Sure, okay.
So Madam Chair, just a follow-up, so, I want to ask, so Mr. Bush, with your earlier point about whether we should strikeouts or not, or a clean copy, are you dropping that, or you still want a resolution?
All I'm saying is that I think it should match with the action, and the discussion items should be clear, and I noticed that sometimes in action items, things were crossed out, and sometimes they weren't. But I, I think it's part of it is that the things that were crossed out were whole sections that were crossed out, so that's why it was included in the action item and the discussion item both.
Okay, so my take on it is that I think it's, it's good the way that Ms. Bushra does it with, because we have a strikeout, and that's pretty clear to see what changed initially, but then sometimes it's hard to see exactly what's going to look like in the end, so having it both ways, you know, having it as a clean copy for the action is good, because then if you really want to dig into it, look, you can look at that copy plus the strikeout copy.
And that was, would be helpful to me, but I was hearing the opinion of the board, it didn't make as big a difference to them, so I was coalescing to the board, so it's fine. But this other thing about the what is Virginia Code and what is VSB, that really is a much, in my opinion, a much more.
So is that a request for VSB to change how they do things?
No, 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 it's simply a request that as we, as Dr. Boyd and the Secretary, as they give us these, that it makes it clear which ones are from a Virginia Code change, and which one is simply a recommendation from VSB, recommendation for changing policy. And I'll come next time, actually showing specifics, and that way all of you will be able to see what I'm talking about much clearer.
Yep, that'd be great.
Madam Chair, I do have a request, I missed the VSB stuff when I was looking at the packet last night, so I would like to just go back briefly to the discussion, the $2,700 that we're spending for Board Docs and discuss that, if we could?
Right now?
Yes.
Okay.
So I only use the website exclusively, so you're obviously using Board Docs right now, and you think it's worth $2,700 a year? I mean, I, I don't use it at all, so I just.
Well, so I would say, right, this, like in this conversation, right, navigating the pages, it is easier to click back and forth. I know there's, there have been, and I can't recall off the top of my head, but I have heard other, right, I think many boards do use Board Docs for a variety of reasons. And because we have not historically, I mean, we use it, but we haven't, I don't know that as a board, we have all like migrated, like gotten into using it. So I'm not, I can't speak to all of the other like, you know, capabilities of it, but like I think it has like a policy function and that different, anyway, so I've been under the impression that if we were to use it more fully, we would probably appreciate the features it offered, but I, I've just started trying to get into using it more often, I guess is where I'm saying. And for the purposes of like this, right, like navigating, because I've always hated scrolling through 150 pages of a PDF, it's easier to navigate and get back and forth between the different policy documents, and you could, if, for example, you wanted to have an easier reference to the revised policies, right, that section, you could download, you could download just that, right? So like I have opened, been clicking back and forth, or I have opened just the policy, the, the, the policy manual updates, right, just the revision section that I can look at, right? So if, for example, Mr. Bush wanted to have a readily accessible copy of it, you could download just that section of the you know, packet from one week, and then easily review it against the next one next year.
Are you able to make markups as you go through notes to use in the meeting?
Indeed.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know that I've tried that just yet, but I imagine you could, I don't know.
Dr. Boyd, from your perspective, is it
I can tell.
Staff at all, they have.
Yeah, absolutely, so the search function on it, as far as former board meetings and the minutes, and then also to be able to find specific references and specific policies, as opposed to going on the webpage and looking under where you may think it is, under Section J, Students, or some other section of the policy manual, gets a little, gets to be a little cumbersome, if you go into Board Docs, you can search for specific terms, and you can really efficiently find the information that you're looking for.
All right, so we'll revisit the policy manual update discussion next week, next week, at our next meeting, okay? So we'll move on to our information items, if we have any committee reports this evening, we'll go the other direction. Mr. Rolls, do you have any committee reports?
I do not, but I will next time, my first meeting is this Thursday for Governor's School.
Cool, look forward to an update. Dr. Cutright?
No report, thank.
All right, Ms. Hawk?
No reports.
Mr. Bush?
A report.
I do not have any reports either, all right, Dr. Boyd, over to you for the superintendent's report.
Just a few pieces of good news, we've been working closely with the first responders in our community, our, our fire department and our emergency services to establish locations at each school. If you remember, we talked about this at board here, at the board, school board meeting, to have medical supplies on location at each school board, we are putting the cabinets in place right now, and that is moving along very nicely, we spent last week working with the fire department, Mr. Lenzair, and that project seems to be moving in the right direction. If you see a trailer next to the high school, or I think we're going to put it between the high school and the middle school, we're moving forward with updating the access points right now at the high school, and also the camera system at the high school, so that project's moving forward quite well as we planned, and the last thing that's pretty cool that I worked on last week is with Parks and Rec. And we submitted a grant between Parks and Rec and the School Division on what they call the Walkabout School Grant, where we can start devising and looking at plans for safe routes for students to walk to school, and we're looking right now at the middle school in the surrounding neighborhoods around the middle school, and any type of trail systems or sidewalk systems we have in place there, so that we can help our students walk to school, so that's all good news. And then finally, for everybody listening and parents at home, your students or your children brought home interim reports. So it's a great time to have a conversation with your child about how the first half of the first quarter of the school year has gone, so from an academic standpoint, we encourage you to have those conversations, so that's all, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Dr. Boyd. Okay, we'll move on to our board comments, so we have a new student rep who I failed to welcome earlier today, so I am very sorry. So Jackson, you are up, would you like to tell us what's been going on at the King George at our high school?
We have a new principal now, so there's been a few.
So there's been a few, I would say, growing pains with that, new policies, et cetera. So a lot of students are kind of growing with that. So it's a bit interesting to see the dynamic between students and the new principal and his new policy changes.
Certainly, certainly. All right, okay. Anything else you'd like to share? Can you tell us what grade are you in?
I am a senior.
You are a senior, very good. All right. Okay, yes, welcome. We're very excited to have you. So awesome. Okay, thank you. And Devin, how are you this evening?
Uh, I'm doing pretty good this evening.
Yeah, and how, how are things in the middle school?
Uh, so, um, I have sent out an email to a variety of students who who I trust to respond to important issues regarding the state of the school. And I have a few that I'd like to mention, if that's all right.
That would be great.
All right, so first, I had a complaint about the lunches. So basically what they said is just better lunches. So I don't know if that's maybe more funding towards that. I know we've had some drastic improvement at the middle school with the salad bar and plastic trays now. So I'm not sure if, uh, I'll have to check back and see if that was sent before those were, have come into effect. But that's all I have to say about that. Next, more time in between classes. So this year at the middle school, we have only had two and a half minutes as opposed to three minutes last year to go between classes. And some students have found it hard to get across the school in that amount of time without being late. So maybe like taking ti- more time off of classes, because I know time was added this year, like five to seven minutes were added to each class this year. So if we took some time off of that to ensure that students can get to where they need to go in the right amount of time, I think that would be good. Uh, I got a complaint about the bullying situation. So I myself did a fair bit of thought onto this, and what I've been thinking is that the only really, the only time that this could have been going on unnoticed is during like the lunchroom area where things are just always chaotic and, you know, you have students mingling like from the entire grade. So maybe like having the teachers pay more attention to the activities and the behavior of students would be nice. Uh, I got a report on later school, uh, school starting later for especially the middle school and the high school. Uh, I guess it could be hard transitioning between the elementary school and the middle school as opposed to like instead of getting up at the same time, getting up an hour, an hour and a half earlier. I think if we could just, I, I thought I'd briefly mention that, just you know, so the students have an easier time transitioning between schools. Uh, I have a request for more representation of the arts, more specifically band and chorus. So I myself, being in band, I agree with this. So when I was in elementary school, the band would usually have a concert in front of the entire school and then a concert in the evenings for parents. And maybe if we could review that and take into consideration doing that for the middle and high schoolers as like some kind of incentive for getting through the semester. That'll be nice for the students. Uh, and my final complaint is, or well, I don't know about complaint, but agendas. So we just got our agendas this Friday, and having a month of school without one has been quite hard on many students, including me. So I think that if we can get those maybe ordered early or make sure that those get here by the time that school starts, that would be uh, very helpful. And that is all I have to say about the state of the school.
All right, thank you, Devin. A lot of, a lot of really good comments and suggestions.
Thank you.
Certainly. Okay, Mr. Bush?
Well, thank you. That was very, that was very well done. In fact, what's ironical is I was actually looking at one of the suggested changes in policy updates, student involvement and decision making. It's exactly what you were doing. So it's just interesting that that's one of the updates. Um, I want to thank the King George Elementary School, that Today Show thing, it was very nice. I think my own granddaughter was there. But it was very nice. He led us in the pledge and appreciate that, and I want to thank them for coming out and doing that. And also, I'm gonna make another comment. Dr. Boyd does this weekly video, which again, if, I'm sure a lot of parents already know that, but those who may still be online, that is really valuable to watch that because he'll, he's available to answer questions that you'll send in. And I think it's extremely valuable for the entire county and the school division to be listening to those weekly reports by Dr. Boyd. So kudos to you, Dr. Boyd, for doing that, and thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bush. Ms. Hawk?
I am delighted to have our students both represented tonight. That is just that, that's really getting us back to a feeling of normal representation. And I, I just hope that both of you will continue to, to hang in there with us. I know it gets boring when we're back in there, but and thank you, thank you both. It, it's so important, and thank you for reaching out to other folks. That, that I would suspect that that gives a voice to other groups and, and will build over the year. So great ideas, yes, I love the idea of those later hours. If we could get enough buses or maybe getting all the students walking to school if they can safely, then it developmentally, those later hours for middle and high schoolers are, are much better. I totally agree. And while we're thinking about future students and, and what's good, we're also, we, we need for folks to go into the teaching, into the education field. But all the other pieces that support the education field are also needing people to take an interest in those careers. I, I just got some interesting information earlier this week about school counselors, for example. The number of school counselors available for us to hire is dwindling. It's not an easy job. We're always looking for people who, who are able to go that extra step and listen as well as talk. And so there's going to be a webinar, just putting it out there, for future Virginia school counselors September, ouch, twelfth. I didn't see the date, but it, but it has been it, it, they kept, they, they are retaining the video. And it's done by the Virginia Department of Education. It's about careers in the Virginia school counseling area. Also want to remember that school nurses, school social workers, school attendance officers are all, they all work together to make sure that we have a safe environment. Again, thank you both for being here and on to you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hawk. Dr. Cutright?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to welcome the two student representatives, Jackson and Devon. We really enjoyed hearing about all the things you had to say. Also, I'd like to recognize the King George Elementary students on the Today Show for the Pledge of Allegiance. Also, I'm happy to see the thirty-three shout outs to the King George employees in the month of August. That was really great, really great for staff morale. So keep that up. I thought we were going to talk about reading tonight, so I'm prepared to talk about reading and focus on reading skills. And I'd just like to say that reading is the most important skill that any student could ever have. And the research shows that children's who, children who have difficulty learning to read and are not on grade level, grade level may need early intervention in the early grades, and it leads to future success. And according to my own research, disadvantaged third grade students in a longitudinal study who are not reading on grade level were unlikely to complete high school, and that's very important. So we need to, as policymakers, the school board members, as administrators, we must give the students the reading strategies that they need in order to be successful. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Cutright. Mr. Rolls?
I'll also welcome Jackson and Devon here. It's good to have you both here. And Devon, you made an interesting point about starting school later for middle school and high school. I know from personal experience of being a parent of elementary school children, as well as two teenagers. The elementary school students, they're getting up early, ready to go, so they're just kind of naturally ready to go earlier, whereas sometimes teenagers like trying to wake the dead. So I'm sure there's some logistical channels, just that I don't have the answers to right offhand, but it's, it's interesting to consider. So thank you for bringing that up. And as Dr. Cutright mentioned, I did encourage my colleagues to come and share about a book or two that you're passionate about a while back, and that's been delayed a couple times for various reasons. And myself, I was gone last week, so I was almost ready to share this time, but I didn't quite get there with that delay. But I will give you sneak peeks. Next time, I think we can make it happen. So I'm thinking about talking about Fahrenheit four fifty-one as well as nineteen eighty-four. Those are two books that I read as a student, and I see they're also in the curriculum for King George, and that's good to see because they're, they're gonna make you think. So I got the dystopian novels covered. So if anybody wants to cover anything more, you know, bright, that's, that's great. Man, I know we got a great variety of personalities and perspectives here, so I look forward to hearing what you're passionate about.
Sounds like we need to add Brave New World or something to the.
I'm sorry?
So it sounds like we need to add, you know, Brave New World or something to the review.
Also good.
All right, anything else?
That's all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rolls. So I don't think I have too much, other than again, thank you, Jackson and Devon for being here. I like the comment about the advocating for the arts. I was a big band and choir proponent. Got to do a lot of really cool things, and I, the value is definitely there. So I, I hear you. I think that's a great, a great suggestion, focus area. And other than that, I just have a reminder to my colleagues about, so our next meeting is on the twenty-sixth, I believe, on Monday, the twenty-sixth, but that same week, we have our meeting with V S B A on the twenty-ninth, which is a Thursday at noon to review our superintendent's search process results. And going into that meeting, I want to ask if everyone could come to our next meeting on Monday, so the, the twenty-sixth beforehand, with your availability in October and early November, so that we can in closed session, but discuss our availability and come up with time so that when we have our meeting with V S B on the twenty-ninth, we can, we're prepared to, to schedule, provide them with timelines that we can do our interviewing. So if anyone could.
And for clarity on that, so the twenty-ninth will be closed session, correct, or?
Correct, correct. But so on the twenty-sixth in closed session, we'll come with your availability and we'll discuss dates. Make sense? Okay, all right, and that is all I have. So we've already done our closed session, so we have a shorter adjournment here this evening. So unless there are additional comments, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion that we adjourn?
All right.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We're now adjourned. Thank you all.